It's probably a purpose in that. Welcome you as we continue our board meeting tonight. We have some special recognitions that we'd like to conduct. First, I'd like to recognize a couple of young ladies who are here from St. Charles Community College. They're well on their way to becoming elementary teachers and I guess wanted to see what a board meeting was like. I hope they won't be too bored. We appreciate you being here. And also Liz, I think you have a few teachers here, some year three teachers. Could they just stand up and be recognized? This is kind of a year when you get to learn a little bit more about Parkway and we appreciate your induction into everything that Parkway is. Nikki, would you do our roll call for us?
Absolutely. Mrs. Applebaum?
Here.
Mr. Applebaum?
Here.
Mrs. Feldman?
Here.
Mrs. Hopper?
Here.
Mrs. Mogerman?
Here.
Dr. Cioratino?
Here.
Mr. Jacob?
Here. Call for a closed session. There is none. We don't have to do the pledge again. Okay, if you would stand with me, we're going to do the pledge of allegiance. I'd like to call on Dr. Chelsea Watson, our Assistant Superintendent of Student Services. She has an introduction for us that we're looking forward to.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, President Jacob, Vice President Mogerman, members of the board, Dr. Marty, Mrs. Stover. This evening I have the pleasure of introducing Mrs. Paula Harden, one of our dedicated parents who also spends time serving our community on the PACCD, Parent Advisory Council for Children with Disabilities. Their mission is as follows: The PACCD is a volunteer parent organization of the Parkway School District committed to securing a quality education for students with special needs. Each year, this dedicated group of parent volunteers takes time to recognize school teams who have gone the extra mile. Please welcome Mrs. Harden as she recognizes our partner awards.
Thank you for having me. I'm here tonight to present the Parkway Partners Award. This award is given to promote cooperation between Parkway and Special School District staff. Each winning team is made up of staff from both districts. We honor these teams with stipends for the purchase of academic materials. Teams are nominated by parents and winners are selected by the PACCD steering team. This year's winner is Parkway West Middle, DeClan Gardner, which is the SSD case manager, Tony Dwyggs, social studies teacher, 7th grade. The teachers that could not be here tonight but need to be recognized are Stephanie Gates Wilson, SSD teacher, Jody Jinkerson, science teacher, and Jeffrey Rogers, ELA teacher, 7th grade. Here to read a summary of her nomination is Belinda Gordon.
Good evening. I nominated this team because this year they were just were exemplary, they have been exemplary and they continue to be. In my nomination, I submitted, I wrote, "The cooperation, collaboration, and hard work demonstrated by this SSD Parkway team so inarguably exemplifies the criteria for such an award. They have and continue to demonstrate to us, John's parents, a commendable visionary educational approach to true implementation of the individual education plan known as the IEP. Their ongoing key observations, parent-inclusive communications, timely responsiveness, has repeatedly culminated in what in a word, a spot on assessment, strategies, and resolutions. Throughout the year, they have notably conflated both their professional and creative strength and development of a very personalized and caring approach to propel, motivate, and support John. From the personalized utilization of cyber technology, the Google Docs, emails, et cetera, in literally every class to communication with us, our ongoing parent-teacher to-do list, phone calls, emails, and feedback, they have created a very inclusive team member approach to education. Anytime education access plan. Their tools utilized to assist him in the school classroom, transcend the school day in a way that has enabled John to access his work at home for the additional time and space that he needs to meet classroom expectations. As parents, this has also provided us an appropriate access to appreciate, appropriate access to the classroom and an ideal pathway to assist John. Personally, we could not be more appreciative of the work and efforts put forth by this education team. For a parent to hear from teachers in their feedback that they noted this and this wasn't working, so what do you think about doing this? You know, I haven't used this before, but might work, but this might work. Or we're doing this with subsequent feedback that says, you know what, he seems to be getting it. One of my favorite education books for particular kids with special needs is Getting to Got It by Betty K. Gardner. Every aforementioned step, comment, and our communication strengthens my resolve that John's success has not been just SSD or just Parkway, is what we do as a team to get to got it. And this team really has worked at getting it. So, we just really appreciate it, this year's work with the SSD and Parkway. They are so deserving, these teachers, of this award. Thank you.
Would the teachers come forward that I just named?
Every student is important to us and we want them all to have the best experience they can here and prepare them for whatever that next step might be for them. So, we really appreciate these teachers that make that special effort. It's always easy to teach the kids or even raise the kids that are easy to raise, but to meet the needs of all kids is a special call and we appreciate it. So, thanks to those wonderful teachers again. We recognize all of them, but you get the recognition tonight. Thank you. Normally, we would take a break here. I'd like to ask, or at least let those who would like to leave at this time, give you a minute or two to do that. And then we'll move on with the meeting. Maybe you want to stay. But if you need to move on, that'd be fine. As Desi would say. Moving on. 6-0 additions, corrections, and modifications to the agenda. 6.01 addendum to agenda, item 11.02 approval of personnel items. 6.02 items 11.18 approval of purchase of elementary bookroom materials, kindergarten, 2nd, 3rd grade from Heinemann. And 11.19 approval of purchase of high school math resources have been pulled to action. We'll review those a little bit later. 7.0 citizen statements. We have three tonight. I would just like to remind you that you have about three minutes to make your presentation to the board and you will receive a response in writing. Some of these responses are, our comments are about items that we'll discuss later in the agenda, so we encourage you to maybe hang around and hear that too and get a fuller description of what is really being talked about. We'll first hear from Keith Toretta. If you would state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Keith Toretta. My address is 1468 Heritage Valley Drive. And I thank you for your time tonight. And my two sons, now in their 30s, are Parkway graduates. I am also proud to be a Parkway substitute teacher for the last five years. I am a certified teacher in Missouri with a lifetime certification and I would like to speak to an item on the agenda this evening. I refer to item 12.01 approval of purchase of substitute employment services. This proposal seeks the outsourcing of substitute teachers to Kelly Services. As a result, substitutes will no longer be Parkway employees. There are some points in this proposal which I just don't understand. In talking to my colleagues who substituted Parkway, I have yet to find one individual who wants to work more than 30 hours per week. The majority of the substitutes are retired individuals, mostly retired teachers from the district, who are dedicated to first and foremost sharing their experience and knowledge with the young leaders of tomorrow. We are also dedicated to preserving the quality of the Parkway schools and quite frankly, take great pride in being a part of one of the finest education systems in the country. In addition, this bank of substitute teachers does not need or want availability to benefits. We already have a benefit program established either through Medicare, a spouse's plan, or other means. This change could jeopardize the existing balance of their benefit program if benefits were to be made available through Kelly Services. I would estimate that you would lose a minimum of 25% of your current pool of subs before next fall if this proposal is accepted. I posed a question at the March 4th meeting on this topic. Has there been a survey of the current subs to see if a 30-hour cap is doable? To my knowledge, nothing has been done to receive input from the sub base. So, how many subs in the current pool want to work more than 30 hours a week? 5%? 10%? Can this whole issue be resolved by limiting hours rather than rebuilding the whole system and bringing in an outside company? Page 12 of the proposal states an estimate of 35 subs that would need insurance provided. Do you really want to destroy a well-functioning system for 400 substitutes of providing the students with capable, caring, invested, and dedicated substitutes instead of asking these 35 to comply with a 30-hour maximum? A second brief point is one which goes directly to the welfare of the people involved. It has been said that outsourcing will not reduce in any way the pay which substitutes receive. Yet through outsourcing, substitutes will receive a benefit plan and additional training which Parkway cannot currently give. Excuse my simple mind. I think there's still only 100 pennies in every dollar and a benefit plan usually accounts for at least 10 to 20% of your salary? In conclusion, I ask you to consider the people involved. Presently, you control the quality of the people who step in front of the students and add life lessons and valuable instruction while covering for an absent teacher. Presently, you provide a positive life experience and a reason for living to the many senior teachers who are substitutes. Presently, we are proud to be part of the Parkway Proud community. Please don't take that away from the students. I thank you for your time and ask for your consideration in this matter and would be happy to answer any questions.
Next on the agenda, we have Nancy Buchanan. If you two would just remind us of your name and address.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak and to the board. Thank you so much for your service. Like Keith, I'm a parent who is so, will forever be grateful for the education that my children received in Parkway. I am a retired Parkway teacher who also doesn't need insurance and I've been a substitute for 10 years. And I came to speak about a more specific aspect of this new plan. We were told at a recent meeting that the district had good news for us, that our pay wouldn't change with the new plan. And I am here to tell you that that is not necessarily good news for your group of substitutes who has not had a pay raise for years. And I was coming to make the point that we would love for you to be our voice because we don't really have one. When, if it does go this route, that we have a subcontractor, and I'm like Keith, I would love to see it stay the same way because, you know, if it's not broke, don't fix it. But if it does go that route, I don't think there's anybody in the room who would be happy to not have had a pay raise for years, even if it's a token one. We all, especially the senior ones of us, take our job very seriously. We don't leave when the bell rings. Oftentimes, we're doing lesson plans for the teacher who's too sick to come in on the second day and doing it cheerfully because we feel like that's a way that we can give back. But I would have to say that there are times when we don't feel appreciated when, like I said, you know, the pay remains the same. I asked last year in the HR office when the last raise was and they said they don't remember. And I don't think anybody would be happy if that was your situation. The other question that was raised, I just heard recently from somebody who's working on the plan, that we will be offered professional opportunities. And I always start off my day by telling the children, I've been teaching for 43 years. I'm wondering, are those opportunities that are offered or are they required? Because like the classroom teachers, I feel like more is expected of us as substitutes every year. We go to unpaid workshops to learn how to do SubFinder, which is now going away. We're encouraged to buy, you know, smartphones so that we can catch those jobs that come along the way. And if we're going to be required to go to classes, I really feel like that's, like Keith said, that may have an impact on your, the folks who are signing up to do the job. I feel like a professional, but I know people who pay more for their babysitters. And I'm not a babysitter. I love, love my job. And I would love it if you could, like I said, be our voice because we don't have one, to, when you're negotiating, if that's the way it goes, to just consider that maybe we're, you know, that would be, there would be a way for you to let us know that you do appreciate what we do. I know it's a common response to be told that, well, Rockwood pays this much or whatever, but like I said, I've loved Parkway for a lot of years. I think of Parkway leaders and the people that you produce and turn out into society as being leaders, not followers. So, to me, it's not good enough to say, well, the rest of them are doing it. We tell our kids that, to do that, that, you know, to make their own decisions. And I would just say that there's a, you know, a big group of people who would be really thankful to you if you were willing to have our back when that time comes, whether it's as a board, you know, negotiating without the contractor, or whether you're turning us over to the contractor in the future. And again, I appreciate everything you do and I appreciate the opportunity to speak on behalf of my colleagues. Any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Buchanan. Next, Mr. Michael Bertsch. Just state your name and your address, please. You've done it before.
Michael Bertsch, 1864 Oxford Court. So, good evening, Dr. Marty, President Jacob now, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. I seem to have yet to run out of things to talk about, so I'm back. A few of you are parents of West Region students and are familiar with Henry Elementary. And later this evening, we're going to have a presentation about the projected enrollment and classroom requirements at the school. Now, I don't mean to steal Scott or Patty's thunder, but given where the citizen statements sit in the agenda, I'm here to speak in support of those recommendations, both as a parent and as an engineer. Three points are important. First, Henry's enrollment has risen and will continue to rise. Make no mistake, this is a high-quality situation, really for any school or school district, and it's a reflection of Henry as a high-quality school in the public's eyes. In fact, just this past week, a large lot was cleared near the corner of Clayton and Henry, which will allow the construction of a few dozen more homes that will fall into Henry's catchment. So, that's one. Number two, class sizes matter. And while we were able to squeeze through this year with some larger-than-expected 5th grade class sizes, it was a bit of a sticky wicket. And this is an important consideration, not just for Henry, but for the district at large, and will need addressing in the long run at this school. Third, the recommendations, as I've seen them, make very good use of the available opportunities from a programmatic, which means how the floor plan works, and site standpoint, this looks like a good solution. In my prior career before investment management, I was a structural engineer in California and my firm did a lot of work on schools, whether it was new construction, renovations, or additions, and what I've seen, the proposal looks very solid. The big takeaway I'd offer you from that experience was the crucial lesson I learned as an engineer is that when dealing with either a hospital or a school, you both get it right the first time and you build enough capacity so you don't come back and have to do it again because the disruption costs are killers. So, I've observed closely Henry's achievements for the last seven years and I'd urge you to approve the recommendations and help secure that future. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I would like Keith and Nancy to know that every member of this board does appreciate every teacher, including substitute teachers, very much. And we know you're some of the unsung heroes at times when other teachers can't be there. So, thank you. Item 9.0, I'm sorry, 8.0, approval of agenda, April 22nd, 2015. Call for a motion in a second to approve the agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of Education scheduled for Wednesday, April 22nd, 2015. All in favor?
No moves.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0. Thank you. 9.0 resolutions, there are none. 10.0 communications, 10.01. We have an introduction now of some new administrators. I'd like to ask Lisa Meredith if she would come to the podium, our Assistant Superintendent of Teaching, Learning, and Accountability, to make those introductions for us.
Good evening. As you are well aware, we are at a critical point with our early learning program within Parkway as a result of the Early Childhood Steering Committee and the study that we did. We are in the process of implementing the four recommendations of making preschool accessible in location, accessible by cost, by increasing our partnerships with private providers in our area and region, and then also working on building community knowledge about the importance of early learning. We have a great foundation on which we need to build and we are confident that we have found the next leader that will help us achieve those four recommendations and continue to build on the excellence. I am pleased to welcome Dr. Elena Ammaralt, who has been chosen as the new Director of Early Learning. Elena is currently the Director of Early Childhood in the Hazelwood School District, where she has held that position since 2011. She has served Hazelwood since 2004 as an elementary classroom teacher and an instructional specialist. Elena holds a Missouri Principal Certification and completed her doctoral program at Maryville University in 2012. Prior to that, she received a Master's in Educational Leadership at Lindenwood University in 2007, and her bachelor's was in Early Childhood Education from Missouri State University in 2000. She has also been trained in response to intervention, professional learning communities, culturally responsive teaching, cooperative learning, and assessment literacy. Elena is very passionate about developing successful, healthy, and happy students. Elena will replace Jean Manning, who is retiring after serving Parkway for 16 years. Elena knows she has big shoes to fill, but she is up to the challenge. Welcome, Elena.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to join the Parkway team. Everyone's been very welcoming and I'm thrilled to be here. I'm very passionate about early childhood. I believe those first five years are the most essential for wiring the brain for all future learning. And so, I promise to make sure that all Parkway students get that foundation they need to be successful.
Elena, welcome to Parkway. When I was elected to the board seven years ago, the first place I visited was the Early Childhood Center. And since then, I have been an evangelist for it. Parkway, it's not K through 12, it's pre-K through 12. We really appreciate that Phil, the import of how important it is to reach kids in those early years so that they're prepared for their other schooling. And thank you, we welcome you here.
I'd just like to add, Dr. Meredith, with the candidates for this position, she had quite a, right Elena? You've got quite a challenge. Staff, a lot of discussion, the parents, we tried to make sure we could observe them with students. I had the opportunity to sit in on a little bit of that and I have to tell you, when Elena was talking to the parents and this whole concept of the wiring of the brain, she had me. She had me. Because I was really, really inspired by what she was saying about those first five years and how vitally important they are and how important it is for us to partner with parents and larger community. So, I'm really thrilled. I think Lisa is correct. I think we are really know the challenges ahead as we continue to grow and dynamic leader and a knowledgeable leader with experiences vital and we're so excited to have Elena.
We have some good plans and expectations to move this to the next level and after we did that study as a board, so looking forward to that. Thank you. 10.02 calendar meetings. The next regularly scheduled meeting is Wednesday, May 6th, 2015, at 7:00 PM here at Central Middle School with an anticipated closed session at 6:00 PM. 10.03 board liaison reports. Do we have anyone?
Well, I'd just like to say that we were, the majority of us were fortunate enough to be able to attend the Innovator Awards for the St. Louis Business Journal, which was recognizing Dr. Marty. And I know some of the administrators are out there, but it was a pretty proud moment to sit there as a representative from Parkway and see Dr. Marty get recognized for a lot of work that a lot of y'all did too, so.
As well as the board.
Yeah.
It was very nice to have all of you there, ministers and board. And I'm very humbled, but it's an organization that has value in change and innovation, so thank you very much. Very nice of you.
Some of us attended the all district orchestra concert. Was that before the last meeting or since the last meeting? It's hard to remember. I think it's since the last meeting. At Queenie Park, where our 5th graders and then our middle school and high school orchestra students performed impeccably as usual. It's really amazing. If you close your eyes, you can imagine that you're sitting in St. Louis Symphony, listening to- can imagine that you're sitting in St. Louis Symphony, listening to professionals play when you get to the high school group. And it's amazing to see the growth the students experience over the years when they go from fifth grade to middle school to high school. So, thank you to Mr. Lackey for putting on such a great show.
Any other liaison reports at this time? I would just echo what Beth just said. I've always said that music has a unique way of wiring the brain for learning. Those that seem to often, that are involved in music, just seem to learn better. So, we, and I've said too, that this is in our DNA here in Parkway, the arts, all facets of it. So, we really appreciate that, and that you're never disappointed to be in those different arts events that the district puts on. In fact, there's one coming up Saturday that you might want to attend at Queenie, the district art fair. Thank you.
It is Saturday and Sunday.
Saturday and Sunday. Ten point oh four, Board Subcommittee Reports, Project Parkway Quarterly Meeting. Is there any Board member that would like to, that was held at North High School. I couldn't be there that night. It was my wife's birthday. I think I made the right decision. Are there any Board members would like to report on the Project Parkway meeting that was held at North High School on April 6th?
I did attend that meeting and was very impressed with Kevin Beckner's report on the new reporting grading system that will be taking place in the elementary schools. So, I thought he did an excellent job with that and rationalized the reasoning why we need to go in the direction that we are. And I do think that it will be a huge improvement for parents to see the new way that the grading will be taking place and the reporting of that. And then I also sat in for the first time in the modern, the Classical Language of Foreign Language Advisory Committee, and we're going to be hearing a report tonight on that program. So, I was very pleased to sit in on that. And actually here, it was all the students who are involved in taking foreign language. They had the middle school students and the high school students. So, I was very impressed with their insight as to the program that they're receiving and the things that they like or improvements that they would like to see with that.
Thank you, Debbie. I think it is always great when we can hear from the students, and those are the ones that we're really trying to reach. So, when they're happy, we know we've done a good job. Ten point oh five, upcoming Subcommittee Meetings for the Board. There's a Student Services Subcommittee Meeting, April 28th, at 3:00 PM at ISC. So, those of you who are on that committee, put that on your calendar. Eleven point oh, Action Items. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented in the April 22nd, 2015 Board Materials?
Second.
Is there anything to be pulled action or closed? All in favor then? Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries seven zero. Twelve point oh, Action Items. Twelve point oh one is the approval of the purchase of substitute employment services. Could I have Patty and Amy come to the podium and help us with that presentation?
Good evening, President Jacob and members of the Board of Education. I have with me this evening Patty Bedborough, Chief Financial Officer, and Eric Luters, Manager of Purchasing and Sustainability, with me this evening to present to the Board information related to a recommendation for contracting of educational services for substitute teachers and substitute nurses. Here are some quick facts about the Parkway Substitute Program. We employ approximately 400 substitute teachers and nurses. We cover, on average, 110 absences per day. We're proud that we have, on average, a 98.6 fill rate. We also fill special school district positions from time to time if it is possible. We have two very dedicated staff members to the substitute program. We have over 30 locations where we need substitutes, and our budget is over $2.5 million. In addition, the district processes substitute certificates for student teachers and student interns when they want to substitute teach in Parkway. Every American and every company, including school districts across the country, have been working through the complexity of the Affordable Care Act. The federal mandate came about in 2012, which then allowed companies' time to develop policies and procedures for compliance. Effective January of 2015, companies that are out of compliance will face penalties. So, with that, Parkway and others had to look at the insurance plan requirements and offer employees who work, on average, of 30 hours or more per week, health care. The penalty, if found to be out of compliance, would be a budget impact of over $4 million. Here's a brief description of the 30-hour rule. The rule includes all hours worked and paid time off. In order for the district to monitor the 30-hour rule, we had to revise our policy, which the Board approved earlier this year. The new policy indicates that we have to determine our administrative period, our measurement period, and the stability period for each employee that is not covered. As you can see, our policy indicates that our measurement period is November 1st through October 31st. Our administrative period is from November 1st to December 31st, and our stability period is from January 1st to December 31st. Parkway has over 2,000 full-time employees. In the 2015 school year, if we do not cover 70% of our employees who qualify, we will have to pay a penalty. In addition, in the 2016 school year, if 95% of our employees who qualify are not covered, then we will have to pay the penalty as well. And again, the penalty would be a budget impact of approximately $4 million. Parkway, along with other school districts, have looked at various options for managing the Affordable Care Act. Possible options we needed to consider were increasing our substitute pool, limiting the work of our current substitutes, implementing a time clock system, hiring of permanent subs, offering benefits to all of those that would qualify, and then also hiring additional staff to manage the tracking and compliance. The other option that we needed to explore was the option of contracted substitute services. Eric Luters led the RFP process, which we recently conducted. Eric, if you would like to talk to the RFP process at this time.
Thank you and good evening. So, working with the Chief Financial Officer and Chief Human Resources Officer, we worked to craft specifications for substitute services. The request for proposal was sent to seven vendors on March 4th, and we opened submissions from five different vendors on March 20th. A team of two principals, the Chief Human Resources Officer, the CFO, and myself, evaluated those proposals based on the price. Those evaluations were conducted based on price of those services, the actual service provided, technical compliance, references, process implementation, and then additional evaluation was conducted regarding the interviews on the top two candidates. Proposals were to address 22 specification category requirements in response to another 40 questions related to the services in question. Scores of each vendor were provided, an average among the review panel, to identify the top two candidates. Those top two companies were invited for a one-hour interview process that incorporated a 15-minute presentation by the vendors and a Q and A session on some predetermined, pre-established questions of the panel. And based on that, a final analysis was conducted related to Parkway's anticipated volume of service and overall programmatic design.
Our next step in the process was to analyze how these cost then compared to our current budget. When we look at our current budget for subs, so this is the entire sub-program, so it includes the employees associated not only with the hiring and training of the subs, but also the subs payroll person too. So, when we compile all the costs, including our system, which is called SubFinder currently, we have a total cost in our current budget of $2.4 million, or $2,463,000. When we're looking at the compliance to the ACA, we had to look in a broad scope and say, okay, in our current subpool, how many, if we looked at it, how many would today qualify for benefits? So, they exceeded the average of 30 hours per week. We obtained the number of 35. To come up with what that insurance cost is, we took that times the single coverage for insurance benefit, and that is $256,000. New employees, to hire them and to track them in payroll, we estimated that we'd need a new part-time payroll staff member. So, to consistently track the 30 hours for the additional employees and then to pay them, and then to have them start clocking in and out of a workforce system, match that workforce system data with the SubFinder data, that would be the duties in this part-time staff person, we had $25,000 for that. Hiring of additional subs for the pool, $40,000. So, that would include not only the startup cost, the hiring and the training of those new subs. And then, training and development of our existing subs, an additional $14,000. Potential additional unemployment claims, so if we extend our current subpool, that would mean potentially, they would only be working two to three days a week instead of their current, sometimes five days a week. So, there are times that they would actually fall into an instance that they could collect unemployment. So, we have in addition to our budget that we'd want to put in there is $12,000 for that. Our systems upgrade of our workforce system, an estimated $25,000. So, the total estimated budget increase for next year, if we kept everything the same, would be an addition of $372,000. So, that brings our Parkway sub-budget to $2,835,000. So, when we analyzed the best cost of the Kelly Services, which is the contractor that we are recommending this evening, the cost is $2,893,000, and that's based on our current usage. So, our current sub-budget that we have without the additional expense is $2,463,000. So, this means a budget add of $430,000. Now, remember, to keep everything the same, we'd still have a budget add of $372,000. So, what this means is we are looking at additional costs for contracted educational services of $58,000. So, why would we make a recommendation with a potential increased cost of $58,000? In our initial analysis, we used an estimate of 35 subs for the benefits to be provided. We also used single coverage of our sub-benefit cost. This may be a conservative outlook. So, as we look further into the projections, we have a potential of 60 subs or so that would become eligible for the benefits if we did not decrease their hours. So, that means an additional 25 subs would be eligible for insurance, and that with single coverage, that cost would be an additional $183,000. So, that would actually have a savings instead of an increase of the $58,000. Also, we want to really work to avoid the ACA penalty, which for Parkway will mean over $4 million. Today, I was at the MOASMO Conference and attended one of the sessions on healthcare reform. And I know when I attended our small Tuesday morning meeting last week, I touched on the case that employees that leave the district from retirement would need a 26-week break in service to not be included in the look-back period and qualify for full-time benefits that next year. The one thing I want to add on that, I thought that included all employees nationwide. Most employees fall under a 13-week break in service rule to not count in the look-back period. However, in the law, educational employees actually have a 26-week period. So, it varies industry versus education. Also, once again, the benefit program that we offer subs has to mirror our current benefit program. It can't be a separate benefit offering, or else we would be subject to some discrimination laws. So, we'd have to offer them that same coverage. So, it would be employee plus 50% of family coverage. So, the items that I costed out in my summary were employee-only because we have to make that, I made the most conservative assumption that it would be just employee-only. But truly, that cost could be even greater because it could be employee plus 50% of their family coverage.
So, after the cost analysis, we worked through the challenges of each program. So, here are some of the benefits and some of the challenges with contracted service. So, some of the benefits, if the substitutes would qualify, they would have an option for insurance with the company. There is added training and development, which currently we cannot provide right now to Parkway subs. We also listened to the vendors regarding recognition programs, and I can't say enough how hard our substitute teachers work for the students and teachers here in Parkway. They are valued and do deserve recognition programs, and we were happy to hear that this was a piece that they could offer. One of the benefit is that the substitutes would still be allowed to work in Parkway. The services to our teachers, the services to the students, teachers would have the opportunity to design their preference lists. Schools could design their preference lists. The substitutes could only work in Parkway if they wanted to. However, if other school districts were to sign on with the same company, they would have availability to work in other school districts as well. Again, the cost to the district is a benefit because of the penalty, even though it is a $58,000 increase to the budget. With classroom consistency, we currently have to restrict our substitutes to three or four days a week. We would not have to do this if we contracted subservices. We would not have to have any work limits. I spoke about the preference lists already. The software that we currently use is called SubFinder. SubFinder was actually purchased by a company called ASOP. So, we were going to have to transition software companies. The company that we are recommending uses ASOP as well, and it's very similar software. The failed-to-fill rate, while we are very proud of a 98.6% fill rate, we believe that we can improve on that. We have an easy exclusion process. Some of the concerns that we heard was about how can we ensure high-quality subs are still in our school district, and we would have full authority to have recommendations that folks not return to Parkway if they do not work out. One of the other benefits was that this particular company that we're recommending offers year-round work for substitutes. So, for example, if someone wanted to work in the summer, say, as a substitute teacher in summer school or a secretary or food service, if the work is available, they would try to find them work so they could maintain year-round employment. We currently use an agency as well as our own Parkway substitutes. We believe that this would eliminate our agency contract for nursing services. And then lastly, of course, the benefit would be no penalty for the Affordable Care Act. So, the challenge, we believe, is what one of our citizen statements was this evening, is that the substitutes would is that the substitutes would no longer be Parkway employees. And that will be our job to ensure that we would have a smooth transition and ensure that the substitutes feel as if it was seamless, that they are still part of the Parkway family and tradition and culture. And next with the, do you have that clicker? Okay. With, you know, our current Parkway program, the benefit, of course, is we have full care and control of the whole program. We talked about many of the challenges in the presentation as it's tied to finances. But it really is a challenging and complicated process, and weighing the benefits and challenges of each, we believe that contracting substitute services will be in the best interests of Parkway. And so we are recommending this evening that we enter into an agreement with Kelly Educational Services to contract substitute and substitute nursing services, beginning with the 2015-2016 school year. And Patty and myself would be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I know this is a challenge to every school district in the country practically. What are other local districts doing?
I can tell you that this is a topic of conversation at every HR meeting that we have on a monthly basis, and every school district is exploring their options as well. We have a few in the area that currently have entered into contracts with companies. Riverview, Normandy, Columbia Public Schools, Special School District is piloting services. I don't want to throw out any others that, you know, but I do know that those districts have made commitments or are piloting. And Patty may know more from her school officials' meeting.
I know currently outstate Springfield has used contracted services for quite a while. North Kansas City, I believe, they're in their third year. Columbia Public Schools are in their second year, and this is the first year for Jefferson City Public Schools.
I mean, it seems to me when you look at the numbers, it's not necessarily like a slam dunk, but the way I look at it is it's more of kind of a risk avoidance, that there's more to manage now with this. And that by outsourcing it, you kind of eliminate that risk. Am I reading that correctly, Ms.?
Putting aside the dollars and cents, the question is what's best for Parkway students? And from what I understood from your explanation the other day, is I'm primarily concerned with the long-term sub assignments, not so much one day here and one day there. But when a teacher is out for an extended period, for whatever reason, currently the way the system works, a sub would not be able to work a five-day work week. So the students would have a smorgasbord of teachers during that time. Is that correct?
That is one strategy. Either the substitute would work three or four days, and then the fifth day off, or if that long-term sub remained in the position for the duration of the leave, then we would have to restrict work going forward. And the sub would have to work maybe one or two days every week, because if we just said you couldn't work for the next six weeks, under the ACA, that time off would not count in their measurement period. So it further complicates monitoring and managing individual people in assignments.
And just kind of to go further on that, the time period that's in between the school year, so the summertime, even though we would in theory count that as zero hours, that also cannot be counted in the average of hours. So any week that is not worked or scheduled to work cannot be counted as a zero hour when looking at that total year. So Christmas break, spring break, summer break. So it makes this whole tracking of the law and even compiling it with a software system that would manage that very, very complicated.
That's right. That's kind of a little quirk in the law.
It seems a little targeted.
So Amy, also, towards the end of the school year, do we run into difficulty? Are some of our subs timed out? They've used their 550 hours of availability, and they can't, they can't come to work if they're invited?
That's correct.
And how would that change under the new system?
Currently, there are no work limits for retirees, and they would be able to work as many hours as they wanted to.
Because they're not directly working for a school district?
That's correct.
Right. So our citizen earlier commented, excuse me, that he didn't know of any people that wanted to work more than 550 hours. What's your experience with that?
The citizen's statements were correct. We did not survey the subs to see if they wanted to work more than three or four days a week. It's about the potential work that they would have. At any time, we could hire somebody, and they would want to work as much as they could. We might have to limit their work, and then they could file for unemployment. A lot of our analysis is that risk avoidance, it's potential, what potentially could we be faced with?
So I got to put that together, that if they've reached their max of 550 hours, then they can, even though they're not allowed to work, they can file for unemployment?
Yes, and they could potentially.
I never put that together before. I mean, I knew subs could get unemployment, but I didn't realize.
Yes, even the nature of the work is as needed. There have been unemployment claims related to substitute teaching.
You talked a little bit about the challenges of transition, and I think that's why you're here in April, because between now and the start of school years, there'll be a lot of work for the district in transition. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. And if Kelly Services is approved this evening, we would set up a transition meeting and work through our communication plan, our operation plan, and set deadlines as far as when we need to meet the tasks that would need to be completed for a successful implementation. First and foremost, notification to our current subpool regarding the decision of the Board of Education, and then inviting them again for conversations related to the transition.
And I just want to, want you to confirm that we do have control over who they send to us to work as subs. It's not just anyone, it's people we can pre-approve.
So on the initial contract, they have a guarantee that they would employ everyone who is currently employed with Parkway. And so if all 400 substitute teachers want to become employees, then they would take on all 400. We may need more than that to fill our sub rates. So the company is responsible for hiring the additional staff that they need. If those employees are placed within our school district and we are not satisfied with their services, then we can exclude from Parkway. Yes.
Ensure that the program is being met as we agree to. So what district monitoring will take place, and what will that cost?
We're cheap.
We're already included in.
So I would be responsible for the management and implementation of the program. Patty, along with myself, and her department would be in charge of monitoring the dollars and making sure that the billing is accurate and our payment mirrors what usage we have utilized within a month. But that would be our responsibility. And part of what we liked about contracted companies is they do ongoing surveys and evaluation and feedback. So we'll be able to get a pulse for the level of service and satisfaction of our teachers and our principals and our nurses.
And would our principals have to say who comes into their compensation?
Yes, they would.
Absolutely.
So the control of compensation, how is that determined? Because that's out of Parkway's hands at this point. So how will Kelly Services determine compensation increases over a period of time and that sort of thing?
So the bids were based on current Parkway's rate of pay. So the company actually pays what we would pay our substitutes, except if we wanted to have a pay increase, then that would have to mirror over there as far as the daily rates of pay or long-term pay structure. And then, did you want to add anything, Patty, to that?
Yeah, and that's essentially what it is. So we have a fairly rich, long-term pay rate as far as if a sub extends their duty more than 10 consecutive days, we retro-pay back a long-term pay, where several districts start a long-term day, our long-term pay, the day they enter into what's considered a long-term sub. So I mirrored just everything that Amy had said on that. We would also build a system that would reconcile the billing essentially to our leave reports too, to ensure that we wouldn't have anything charged on the bill that did not have a corresponding absence from a teacher or a nurse.
Place with the substitute staff to inform them, as well as get any kind of feeling regarding their sentiment regarding this change?
Patty and I hosted three informational meetings in February and in March regarding the potential change in the rationale for the change. Patty and I, as you know, came onboard July 1, and the Affordable Care Act came about in 2012. And so Patty and I had actually worked for a year and a half almost on the strategies in our former school districts, how we would attack this problem. So we had a very short window of time to come in and analyze and figure out where we are and where we needed to go with the Parkway substitute program. So unfortunately, our timeframe was very short. But we did have three informational meetings, answered, you know, questions as they came available. And we'll certainly have more meetings if the board approves a contracted service this evening.
Will there be any further communication with the substitute staff at large, once this takes place, if it does? In other words, are they still going to get the feeling that Parkway cares about them as a group?
Yes, that will be part of our transition plan.
And will that be ongoing in some respect?
Yes.
I was just going to ask, how well-attended were the informational meetings that you held? How many substitutes, if we have 400, how many came?
I would say around 250 total.
So about half, a little more than half.
A little more than half, yeah.
Are there any contemplated percentage increases in the daily rate in those subsequent option years? That's the only way you're going to, that they would be able to reward their employees with more money if that rate goes up, or unless they shrink it, which they're probably pretty tight already.
So in any of our financial projections that we've provided to them or that they've requested, we haven't addressed that at all. Now, one thing that I believe Amy touched on is they do have additional employee benefits that we do not have, and some of it is Kelly Services specifically had like a 401K. And they, I believe they had a match after so many days.
120-day.
120-day match. And then there was another, what's it, a bonus system that was set in. So there are some intricacies to their employee benefits program that actually makes it a very good benefit package, where it may not be in salary that it's an increase, but certainly with possible benefit offerings it is. And certainly if the board wants us to move in a direction that we, when we're working on the contract language with this, if you want us to build in at least defined review periods to look at increases, we certainly can look in that if the board so wishes.
Let's say we decided to keep it what we have and try to manage it, and all the complexities of the ACA. And you said, okay, those 35 employees that are getting more than 30 hours of work in defined periods, we're just going to stop that. We're going to make sure they never get above that. But what if one or two snuck through? What then happens to the penalty? Does that then apply to the other 2,500 employees that we have?
No, one or two is not the issue. So this first year, we have a threshold that we have to at least offer benefits to 70% of our full-time employees, so any employee over 30 hours. So we have a 30% gap that can be not insured. Next year, that moves to a 95%, so only a 5% uninsured. So when you take all of our subs plus all of our part-time staff, that just aggravates and complicates the tracking, and, you know, pretty easily, we could go over that threshold.
Okay, thank you.
So how does Kelly Services, how do they do background screenings? Is it similar to what we do? And are you comfortable with what they do?
Yes, they mirror the school district background check process, and they would complete any state-required background checks that are in place.
So at this point, one of the citizen's statements commented about the effect of their own family's benefits involved in this situation, which I appreciate, because currently, if you have an individual who is not offered benefits, or if they're working part-time and their spouse has employee benefits, and as long as they're working below a certain number of hours and they don't, then they don't have to pay for that through their employer. And then it's free for them through their spouse. Now, if they're coming on to Kelly Services and it's being offered, or they're working more than 30 hours, that spins that entire family's budget into a different direction. So I'm still wondering how we're, how many employees that would, how much of a, right, but it, but if it's not being offered now versus it is being offered, then that puts a different spin for that family.
The way I understand it, Debbie and Patty, you can tell me if you, but it is, it would be the spouse's health insurance plan design. So if that plan design indicated that they could not have benefits, because benefits are offered over at another company, then yes, that could potentially impact the family. But it goes back to the spouse's individual plan. And we don't have any way of knowing what, there are multiple plans out there for companies to sign on with.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I think a substitute could turn down a job.
Correct.
And if something is going to wreak havoc with a family's budget based on insurance availability through Kelly, that would disrupt what they have through a spouse's employer, then they can just say, no, thank you. They don't have to call in for a job. Is that correct?
That's correct.
We have a substitute in a classroom that may need to be there for, say, two or three days, and they're with Kelly. Will Kelly allow them to remain in that classroom for those three days and not pull them on another job somewhere else and then bring somebody else in so that we're getting multiple substitutes within the same classroom in a short period of time?
Yes, they would. Yes, they would, they would provide consistency for the students. And if the substitute had to be pulled, it would not be something that the district would recommend or Kelly, that might be an individual substitute teacher choice. But the consistency for the students is what our goal would be.
My other question is, how confident are you if we were to keep things managed within Parkway and proceed with the changes that need to be made in order to comply? What's your confidence level that we would be able to comply if we stayed keeping this in Parkway?
Add some additional staff to.
We'd have to add additional staff. We definitely have to add additions to our workforce system. And that additional staff would not only have to reconcile the new additions to clocking in and out for subs to our sub-system, but also would need to help in tracking the hours. And like I mentioned, currently, there's not a specialized software that in particular just looks at educational settings to take out those weeks not worked, et cetera. So, I mean, it'll be complicated and very, very difficult to have a certain number. Now, we'd be ultra-conservative and really probably limit, probably greater than we need to limit just to be as conservative and as we need to be in order to avoid the penalty.
I think that the workforce and time clocking issue is the biggest issue because under Affordable Care, if you do not have a time clocking system, you have to assume eight hours are worked. And so, right now, eight hours would only allow a substitute to work three days a week. And if we had a time clocking system, it would potentially be less so they could work more. But in addition to the work being done during the day, we have the management of the subs that are in long-term positions and then restricting work after they finish their long-term assignment. And in most cases, our long-term subs could be our best subs, which we would want to work more. And so, we would have, we would be forced to restrict their work. So, could we do it? Yes, am I confident we could do it? I think it would be very challenging to get that up and running and ready for August. We can certainly, we can certainly do our absolute best. But we believe that the contracted service is the best option for the district for management and quality of the program.
Sam's question, there will be an onsite, or I don't know if an onsite, but there will be a manager that will be, you'll be working with that Kelly will provide. So, when you said you're going to take leadership, actually you do, but there will be a person that will be assigned, right?
Yes, yes, there will be someone assigned to Parkway. They do have four local offices in the area, one very close by in the Westport area. So, we would, we feel confident that we would have a personal manager to work with on a daily basis.
It's a disaster. We can opt out, we don't have to do it anymore. I mean, we can change a service, change a different service or do it on our own.
So, initially, it is one-year terms. And then, when we do contract negotiation, we will fit in a term of notification that certainly they couldn't give us a two-week notice that they are finished with us. And we would never want to give them just a two-week notice that we'd be up and ready to go tomorrow. We know that it's going to take an implementation period on either way. So, when we build the contract language, Amy and I will discuss, you know, is that a ninety day? Is that a one-twenty day? Is that a one-hundred-and-eighty day minimum that we want to build in there? So that if we do decide this isn't working for us, how long does it take us then to rehire and get it going for that next year?
You know, I recognize this is very clear for Parkway. We've taken great pride in employing, you know, our staff. And so, I can understand the sensitivity about this. I will tell you, as superintendent, I've been in districts where we've had contracted service for food service, custodial services, transportation. And the onus is on the district to work closely with the provider and to really have a good relationship with that provider so that those employees can still feel a strong part of the district. So, I think it's our onus to work with the recognition program, but to also communicate appropriately with our subs. And so, we want them to feel still strongly as part of Parkway. But when I first heard this, I had a lot of questions, a lot of concerns. But I think, as you heard tonight, the thoroughness of the study, I think, and you just asked a question, we're not bound, you know, with a long-term contract. But I do believe that our interest here, and I think you have people like Patty and Amy, you want them to be very careful and watchful of our efficiency, our effectiveness, and also our ability to make sure we're not going to have high risk. And this is a high risk to me is a, there's one thing about this act, there's tremendous penalties. And I'm sure there's going to be a lot of watchdogging of agencies. And it particularly appears they're going to be picking on education. If I'm hearing things right, they really have some unique qualifiers for education in the public sector.
And does it only allow us to use them as providers? Let's say we want to hire a long-term sub or we want to, you know, do something outside of their services. Are we allowed to that? Are we bound to just use them exclusively?
I think for teachers and for nurses, that's all-inclusive. So, for secretary subs, food service subs, et cetera, that's still on our own.
But if we decide halfway through the year that North High needs a long-term sub and they're building just for daily use.
So, if we wanted to hire someone.
That was a permanent sub more?
If it was a permanent sub, we would need to go through them. However, if we had a teacher, say, needed to take a leave of absence or resign mid-year because of a transfer. If we wanted to employ someone that was currently a Kelly Services substitute, we would then just hire that employee back.
Any other questions?
A lot of good questions, a lot of good thoughts. And we recognize that it's very complex. Appreciate the efforts that you have gone through to make this as exhaustive and thorough as you could to, and I appreciate the fiduciary duty that you've gone through to make sure that the district is protected. A four-million-dollar hit, I can't imagine what we'd have to do, but we certainly would be having to do things in the classroom to accommodate that.
All right, are there any other questions?
Well, may I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education approve the best proposal submitted by Kelly Services in the estimated amount of approximately $2.9 million annually, depending on how often substitute employment services are required for the 2015-2016 school year. That's July 2015 through June 2016, with four one-year options to renew, subject to the terms and conditions of the district's specifications.
So moved.
I'd like to have this as a roll call since it's an action item, Nikki.
Mr. Applebaum?
Yes.
Mrs. Applebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Dr. Ciotino? Mrs. Hopper? Mrs. Mogerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Feldman?
Yes.
Mr. Jacob?
Yes. The motion carries seven zero. I want to thank everybody and we'll press forward and do a better job than what we've done in the past, I'm sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eleven point one eight, approval of purchase of elementary bookroom materials, kindergarten, second and third, from Heinemann. Susan, thank you. Susan Erbe will help us with this.
Three of the purchase and the process that went into recommending this purchase. So, I thought it would be helpful to just give a little context for teaching reading in the elementary school. Unlike other programs in math, we don't have a textbook adoption that we go, that we do. We teach all of our reading instruction through trade books. And so, we really have three categories of instructional materials. One category is are the materials that teachers use to teach and model their lessons from. Those books are in the hands of teachers mostly, and so they have a pretty long shelf life. The other two categories of instructional materials are the classroom libraries that are in every classroom K-5. Those books are in the hands of children, day in and day out, going home, back and forth between school. And then, the other category is the literacy library, which this purchase is recommended to supplement. Those books also are books that are used for small group instruction. They're in the hands of children as well, going back and forth between school, in and out of desks and things like that. So, just to give you a visual, they're books that are kind of like this, paperback, and they don't have a very long shelf life. So, this recommendation comes because we've tried to do a cycle of purchasing to support our reading instruction at the elementary level. The last time that we purchased books for the literacy library was in the 2010-2011 school year. So, we did an inventory of our current supply. And we just, from every school, the instructional coach submitted feedback regarding which books were in good condition and still able to be used and where we still needed to supplement. And the primary grades K through three had the biggest need. So, we pulled the instructional coaches together to review materials so that we could supplement those books for small group instruction. And they recommended moving forward with the Heinemann, Fountas and Pennell collection. It aligns with our benchmark assessment that we give at K-5. So, it helps to ensure that the titles that we purchase are the right level for the kids based on the assessments that they give. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
I call for a motion in a second that the Board of Education approve the purchase of eighteen sets, each of Fountas and Pennell Select Kindergarten Collection I, Fountas and Pennell Select Kindergarten Collection II, Fountas and Pennell Select Grade II Collection I, and Fountas and Pennell Select Grade III Collection I from Heinemann in the amount of $77,090 from the Elementary English-Languaged Arts Textbook Matrix for 2014-15.
So moved.
Nikki, if you would perform a roll call for us.
Mrs. Applebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Applebaum?
Yes.
Mrs. Feldman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hopper?
Yes.
Mrs. Mogerman?
Yes.
Dr. Ciotino?
Yes.
Mr. Jacob?
Yes. The item consent, action item passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. And now eleven point one nine, approval of purchase of high school math resources. Jennifer Profit from our high school STEM curriculum coordinator.
President Jacobs? Vice President Mogerman?
I still feel like the vice president.
Dr. Pardy and Mrs. Stover. I'm seeking approval for the purchase of college algebra textbooks this evening. And it's for our new college algebra course that was just approved last October and will begin for the first time in the fall. Currently, the enrollment is approximately around three hundred students over the four high schools. We're really excited about offering this because it will carry college credit with it through UMSO. This adoption will be a mixed platform with the main component actually being an online resource called Web Assign. Web Assign does have homework tutorials, practice, it's got assessment modules in it. You can also download the textbook and use it offline if you would like. To make sure that everybody has access though, we're also asking to get a classroom set of textbooks per teacher so that that way if students do not have access, they will have a textbook that they can use. This resource was chosen by a team of teachers who will be teaching the course next year. They have had a trial period with Web Assign. We have had students look at the book also because it was down to two at the end. And so, we had students look at both of them. And they have chosen this college algebra by Larson as their favorite. So, at this time, we'll answer any questions that you have.
Is this going to be monitored in the effectiveness of the particular items that are being purchased now?
Yes, and that is, that's a good question because normally that kind of goes through program evaluation. Each of the textbooks, when we go to purchase them, it's a very, very large purchase. And so, it's kind of a six-year commitment when we go into it. So, we try to do a lot of work upfront, making sure that this is the resource that we want when we get started. So, I think it's something that we don't have anything kind of on the books right now of how we assess it over time, but that was a great question. And I think that we will be looking into how that will work. We do have a lot of informal conversations about what's good, what's bad, so that when the next textbook adoption comes up, it's like, oh. And this book that we're choosing Larson, we have used him before and it's very popular and very well-known, so.
Is the college credit going to be offered through UMSO?
Uh huh.
And is it four credits that they'll be getting?
You know, I don't know that. I think it's a three-hour course.
Okay, just for reference, just today, I signed my daughter up for college algebra through the community college system and paid $404.
Exactly.
So, I think it'd be great if we could send, and I know that UMSO charges less for our dual-credit courses. They would be a great opportunity for our students to head to college with that under their belts at a lower price for parents.
Yes, our graduate survey said, we had over two hundred respondents in the graduate survey. Twenty-five percent of them said college algebra was the first course that they took. So, that is why we're really excited about being able to offer it, so.
Schools?
We have higher enrollment in one school than in the others, but I think it was just the advertisement of it really is what it comes down to. So, we do, we are hoping that it will even out and be more about a hundred per building after the first year.
Can I make a suggestion? And we used to do this when we were doing, when we were doing Fast and Furious purchases of textbooks. Could we make them available to board members so that they have questions? They can come to the central office or to your, and take a look at them so that we don't have to, you know, so that ahead of time we can look at it? And I know, I'm sure you, do you have parents on your committee still that review these books? Or is it mainly teachers? I'm sorry.
It probably depends on. Well, it also depends on the level of adoption. We didn't have any in this college algebra one, but I think as we look next year into algebra, geometry, algebra two, which are more of our core classes.
And especially elementary, I think it's more, if we're doing a major change with that stuff.
So, whenever we're looking at a complete program change, like the elementary resource that we have done a year-long study with, parents have been involved in giving feedback in what characteristics are important to them, what they're looking for to be able to support their students at home. And that was done this year through the Project Parkway advisory that was on elementary mathematics.
But at any time, if any parent has a question and they ask their principal or their teacher, they are welcomed with open arms to come in and look at any material that their kids are using at school.
Absolutely. And we can create a library of one of each in the TLA department if that would be helpful for you guys to be able to come look at them or to us bring them to you even if that would be helpful.
There's a lot of supplemental things, online opportunities. So, it's not just looking at a textbook anymore, it's really looking at all the things that go in.
And it really is, for this particular adoption, less expensive. So, good goal six to get the online resource, so, yeah.
That takes a particular course or are they recommended? Or do they have to meet certain criteria?
It's a mixture. We do have a prerequisite of an Algebra II, Algebra II trig coursework to get into it. And then, it really is based on teacher recommendation as well as student interest. So, these might be non-STEM career-led people because they're probably going to be in more like the calculus curriculum as their capstone course, so.
And will most colleges and universities accept it as a course completed?
That's why we like working with University of Missouri-St. Louis because it's in the University of Missouri system, so.
Well, they're offering credit, but would another university recognize the fact that they have a college?
And that is something that we ask students to check into as they're working through where they want to go to college.
So, that's an individual thing with the student?
Different universities vary. Yes, yes. We do the same thing like with the AP curriculum. Some schools will take AP credit, some, and then we also offer dual-credit in our AP courses too. So, we recommend to the students to check with the universities that they're interested in and figure out which one is going to work best for where they want to go.
Thank you.
May I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education approve the purchase of high school math materials not to exceed the amount of $53,936.72.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Applebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Applebaum?
Yes.
Mrs. Feldman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hopper?
Yes.
Mrs. Mogerman?
Yes.
Dr. Ciotino?
Yes.
Mr. Jacob?
Yes. The motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much. Thirteen point O, work session, thirteen point O one, Henry Elementary Space Utilization Study. Over the last several years, two of my children have gone through Henry when it was in the low four hundreds. And we're over five hundred there now, so it's, in some ways, it's kind of exciting. We look forward to the presentation that you make tonight, Scott. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Let's get this right here. We were contacted, the facilities department was contacted in the winter to look into the issue of projected increase in enrollment at Henry and to determine the impact that that might have on the school. Specifically, we were asked to look whether the existing space was being utilized efficiently, whether or not the increased enrollment would have an impact on the space, and the potential for facilities-based solutions to the increased enrollment. The five-year enrollment projections as of the fall were, as displayed here, were currently, at least at the beginning of the school year, were at four ninety-eight. As of the writing of the report, we were at five hundred and nine students. The projection for five years is a sixty-four increase from the original to five hundred and sixty-two students. I was just informed by Dr. Pot this morning that the projection numbers are already wrong, that the fifteen-sixteen school year is actually going to be at five thirty-six for the projection. So we're climbing a little faster than projected. We analyzed the existing facility and talking with Dr. Pot about the current programs that were in the facility, where the instruction was happening in what spaces. We analyzed the numbers compared to policy JCB for class size, and obviously took into account the enrollment projections. The result of the study is, we believe that the space is being used as efficiently as possible, and that, other than programmatic changes at the facility, the only way to solve the problem is with additional classroom space. Or modifying the policy for class size. Again, these numbers are a little outdated, given the present data, but as you can see, over the next five years, we're projecting with that sixty-four student increase to be four classrooms short. We were projecting one classroom short for next year, but that could be, depending on the distribution, I haven't had a chance to analyze those numbers yet, could be anywhere from two up to three classrooms short for next year. In analyzing the facility options for solving the space problems, we looked at four different building addition location options. We then looked at four different scenarios incorporating various sites in those four options. And we also looked at the two temporary modular classroom buildings that are at the facility. I note the word temporary, however, one is twenty-two years old and one is twelve years old. And as a matter of fact, for the next bond issue, I was going to be recommending that we would either have to spend significant funds to bring them up and renovate them, or look at an addition to replace them. This is an aerial view of Henry. North is to the top. Henry Road is on the left, just at the bottom corner. The sites that we looked at to build additions are shown in white and are numbered. Area one is at the south next to the kindergarten, basically where the kindergarten playground is currently located. Area two is a classroom addition that could be put on the end of the north classroom wing. Area three is a space down next to the music classroom that if a, if a, it was determined to get rid of the strings modular classroom, that's where strings is located, correct, currently in the one classroom modular, you could build the strings addition next to the music and keep that all together in that location three. And area four is on the east or northeast end of the building, back at the end of the two-story classroom wing. This could be either a two-story wing that contains four classrooms, or the potential you could go down, since the grades slope away from that to the east, and do a three-story, six-classroom wing, much like a walkout basement for the lower level. This shows a little more about what we're recommending. So the area one is the two kindergarten addition. The advantage of this would put all four kindergarten classrooms in the same location, adjacent to each other. It would require the relocation of the playground closer to the parking lot. We would obviously make sure that it was safe with guardrails and things like that, so the drives and parking wouldn't have a chance to go over the edge into the playground. The four-classroom addition in area two is shown in green. So that's a net of six classrooms. The music addition is the strings classroom. And it's shown in orange. We, the option we're recommending does not include the area four addition in the back. As we said, it includes a six-classroom and music classroom addition. It will solve the classroom shortfall and would also replace the temporary modular classrooms. We estimate a budget of between two million and two-point-eight million. And the reason there's such a big gap there is, number one, at the time when we're putting this together, we're not sure whether or not we wanted to do the strings addition or not, and we're still not, so we would be designing it if we move forward as an alternate bid that could be accepted or rejected at the time of the bid. Also, since we've not done any geotechnical investigations yet, and we have not done an in-depth code analysis, there is a potential that we might have to do drilled piers, which would increase the foundation costs, and we might have to sprinkler the building, which would increase the cost for sprinkling and some asbestos abatement to install the sprinkler systems. So that's why there's a wide range there between two and two-point-eight. We would have a handle on that fairly early in the design, so we wouldn't have to wait till we actually get bids to know where we're at on that spectrum. As far as where could we fund this from, the recommendation is the current year's program in the bond issue, the summer of two thousand and fifteen projects. We were fortunate in a couple areas. We got really good numbers from our asbestos abatement contractor on McKelvey, much less than what we had anticipated. We also had good bids all the way across on our jobs. The combined underrun on budget on those right now is one-point-eight million. And that's assuming we would spend one hundred percent of the construction contingencies that we have budget on the projects. We would still be one-point-eight million under. Also, the savings that we, or the bond premium cost funds that we got from the bond sale, talking with our CFO, Patty Bedborough, she indicated that there was four-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand dollars available from those premium funds that could be allocated. There's a potential that we have some other underruns coming forward, we just haven't don't have those realized yet. There's some bids coming in on some other bond projects. I will caution that this is the first year of the bond issue. We are underrunning this year. Hopefully, that trend continues. If for some reason it would not, and we would run over down the road and have to eat up some of those savings, and we would obviously have to come back to you and talk about other funding options, which might include deferring a project or two in the last year of the bond issue into the first year of the next bond issue. But as of right now, we don't believe that's going to be necessary. Guess that's it. Take any questions?
So this isn't necessarily a question for you, but I have to ask. Rather than build an addition, why wouldn't we redistrict?
Well, I think that's, I mean, that's certainly an option. I think what we have here is something that's pretty immediate. And I would like just to take a moment to compliment Scott, but also working with Dr. Pot in terms of, you know, we were going to have to look at potentially some more portables. And so there's some options, but I would say that, you know, this would be an isolated situation. We have, and you heard Michael Burge talk about the fact there's some clearing going on, an additional area close to the school. So as much as we would potentially like to redistrict, we're talking about a neighborhood here that's growing, the area by the Target area. I don't know if there's any alternative to that to go to Henry, so, you know, we could look at some outline areas. But personally, I guess I would say that as we start talking about renewing goal six and, you know, our next facility round, I think the whole concept of looking at the district as a whole, rather than just isolating on Henry, is an option. But I don't know if anybody else would want to, Michael or anybody else wants to take a shot at that, or Desi, Desi who's been?
I wasn't, because I don't want to do that again, Dee. If that's, so, no. Really, I think we're really thinking another step ahead on this one, because potentially there was some thought about how could we maybe even take one of the new areas and redistrict into, Highcroft will be the only school that would really be close with space, the closest with space. But also, we also know on the horizon, there's potential development in Maryland Heights that could impact the Riverbend area, which could, which would kind of push back down. And so I think it would be wise to continue to have some space and flexibility for that future development, or else that might catch us off guard. So that's really part of the thought process behind it. If, I mean, that's, there's a pretty large development being discussed for that area, and if we need to, we may have to roll back this way with redistricting as well. So I think it would be wise to be prepared for that and have some space available.
Absolutely, and I think, again, paying the picture better than I did, because he got more specific, but, I mean, there's some bigger issues in the district happening that will affect us.
The middle is bursting.
Right. And there's some, I mean, there is potential property that we're keeping an eye on, on the corner, the northwest corner of two-seventy and Page, with the extension right there that still is up for sale and be potentially more residential or apartment developments as well.
Thank you.
There was actually an article today in one of my engineering magazines about that property. It went to the Planning and Zoning Department of Maryland Heights. It's going to be a mixed-use development, both high-density apartments, senior living quarters, and some commercial. It's thirty-five acres.
I think one of the things about Henry and surrounding communities there, those are the kind of homes that are very affordable for families, as opposed to some of the six-hundred-thousand and whatnot, so that's one reason why we're seeing some re-greening, because families can come here and find affordable housing where there's a good school district and lots of other good facilities. And then we throw on top of that, that corner there at Clayton and Shetler. And who knows how many homes are going in there? If they do like they did over there by Target, they put sixty-three homes, where I didn't think you could get twenty. And so, when would we start this? I mean, how quickly could we do something?
If I'm going to have, building it next year, I'm going to need to get the nod on this very quickly. We typically, we started designing for next summer back in February. So if I start this project now, I'm going to be, I'm losing three months off my normal schedule. We can pull it off, but I don't have a lot of time to wait and be able to pull it off.
Could you do all three of those additions, or would those be spread out over a couple of years?
Can do it all at once. Without having the final design and knowing for sure, it would probably run like a lot of our additions we do that are through the school year. We would start in the spring, as soon as the weather broke, and then depending on how the weather cooperated, we would get done early fall. When we built the addition at North High, we did basically that, and we wrapped that up in October and started it in the spring. And we ran into some delays there with some underground utilities and things that we might have been able to get done maybe four weeks earlier in September, had it not been for some of those problems.
Abatement, because this building would have to be empty for that?
Yes. The nice thing is these are additions, we're not doing a lot of interior renovations, so. If we did, any abatement we would have to do would be done over the summer.
Is Henry slated for summer school next year? Is Henry slated for summer school next year?
Yes. She says yes.
So we would have, we have to look at either, and we haven't got into that yet, we would either have to look at shifting that schedule around, or looking for a safe, as long as we would stay out of the north wing and the kindergarten, there might be a way to pull it off. But I'd, yeah, I'd prefer not to, but if that's our only option, then I'm sure we could make something work there to where they could have summer school and still be able to build those additions. The nice thing is they're out on the perimeter, they're not at the front entrance, so there's ways to get students and staff into the building.
Are those modular units, are they ready to be scrapped, or can they still be used for something functional? No. Had to ask.
Not tomorrow, but by the next bond issue for sure. You had to put a significant investment into them or take care of it now. And we did investigate, as a short-term fix, modular classrooms, rent, leasing for a couple of years, a two-classroom modular building to get us through the short term. That's, you know, it's a two-hundred-thousand-dollar bill, and it's just, the problem with building modular in St. Louis County is, it's modular, it's not temporary. You're required to put it on paired foundations, you can't just strap it down. This is going to be a regular classroom, not a specialty instruction where kids are coming and going, so they're going to be there all day, which means you need plumbing, you need bathrooms, which means three-hundred-foot sanitary sewer and three-hundred-foot waterline and things like that start adding to the cost. Dr. Pot indicated that, you know, if, that if we move forward in addition, she and her staff would make every attempt to try and find a way to consolidate and live through the projected congestion of next year, knowing that there was a light at the end of the tunnel, so.
Do you know if there are any special needs classrooms being utilized at Henry now?
There are quite a few being utilized at Henry. Yes, there's physical therapy, occupational therapy, several others.
Could they be relocated to another school?
That would be a programmatic change. We did not analyze that, that would be, that's above my pay grade.
That'll free up some classroom space, I assume.
We actually, we did discuss that. It's not, it's not necessarily a housing for, like a district program, so those are Henry students, so, yeah, so it would be displacing, right.
Yeah.
But that was part of our discussion as well.
That's understandable not to move them, yeah.
And some of the spaces are being shared, so it's not like we have one special needs class taking up an entire classroom. There's multiple functions going on in the spaces.
Other questions? Thank you, Scott.
One last thing, if you do say for me to go, we already have architects and engineers under contract on a continuing service basis, so we could get started right away, and then bring, obviously bring the construction contract back to you at the appropriate time. Thank you.
This is our work session tonight, and I think more than anything, we're looking for any questions you have, unless we hear a lot of concerns or oppositions, I think the thought is that we will proceed and come back to you with more information and action that would be required.
Problem, and the good news is, we seem to have the funds, or most of the funds, to do it, so.
Okay.
We're not voting on it tonight, but I think there's a pretty positive feeling to move forward.
And as Scott pointed out and with Patty's work, right now, we would hope that it doesn't impact other projects. But as Scott pointed out, there may be an impact. But right now with some of the savings and the premium, we're, we think we could fund this appropriately.
Well, if there is any impact, if you'd let us know about that the next time you come back or ahead of time.
As far as to the bond issue list, I won't really know that for another year or two as we bid out more projects. So.
It's really the short-term analysis that you've provided.
Yeah. I can only analyze it based on the savings we've had in this year's bids. Now, next year, we'll have a better feel because we have a lot of things getting bid in this next bidding cycle, including North High, which is, you know, we're going to be probably well over 50% of the bond issue bid out by this time next year, so.
This is good for kids. Thank you very much. 14.0, policy review. 14.01, CI dot BP, Administrative Interns/Certified and Non-Certified Administrative Assistant Program. If Amy Joyce, I don't, in case we have any questions.
The policy that is up for review amends the language regarding administrative interns that are under a teacher contract, that they would accrue tenure when they are on an intern contract with the school district. And that is in compliance with teacher tenure law. So if you have any questions, I could- That, it does. The language was not mirroring what we, what we would do.
It's a different language then, okay.
Compliance, complying.
It's, it is a change.
Yes.
I don't think any of us have questions, Chris.
Any questions?
All right. Thank you very much, Amy. Our next one is 14.02, JEB dot BP, Entrance Age Requirements. Doctor- Does anybody have any questions before we?
Very similar to what Amy said. We just need to bring our policy up to date and be consistent with the practice.
Okay. Apparently no questions, so thank you very much. And these policies will be up for approval at the May 6 board meeting. So if you have any additional questions in the meantime, please let us know. Reports, 15.01, Modern Classical Languages Program Evaluation. I see that Nancy ya esta acercando nosotros. Oh, that really sounds good. She was just telling me how good-looking I am.
Yeah. Y la vicepresidente también, señora Mogerman. Good evening, President Jacob, Vice President Mogerman, Dr. Marty, Mrs. Stover, and members of the board. I appreciate this opportunity to share with you the feedback and outcomes of our Modern and Classical Languages Program Evaluation. This past March, some of our students went to Germany with their German classes. To keep in touch with family back home, they kept a Facebook page called Deutschland 2015. A student shares his reflection on his time in Germany. Among other interesting and entertaining information, the student writes, "First of all, I would like to thank my host family for everything they have done for me. They have played a huge part in making this trip one of the best experiences of my life. This trip, and more specifically, the host day, has exceeded my expectations and improved my German skills exponentially. You truly do learn a language best when you are immersed in it. I would also like to thank the Frau's and my parents for giving me the opportunity to go on this trip. I will truly miss my host family and Germany as a whole." This snippet from a Facebook post demonstrates the reality of language learning. It's in alignment with the World Readiness Standards for Learning Languages. These standards are the cornerstone for language teaching and learning in Parkway. Also known as the five Cs, the standards value communication to function in a variety of situations and for multiple purposes, cultures, both practices and perspectives, connections to other disciplines, comparisons of the new language to our first language, and the fifth C, communities, using the language within our own community and the globalized world. Although an awkward phrase, know how, when, and why to say what, to whom, succinctly summarizes the main goal of learning another language, this phrase, along with the World Readiness Standards for Language Learning, encompassed the vision and goals of Parkway's Modern and Classical Language Program. Who is studying languages in Parkway? About 58% of our middle school students. About 61% of our high school students. What languages are our students learning? Here is the breakdown by language. Almost 89% of current seniors have enrolled in an MCL class at some time during their time in Parkway. Beginning in January 2014, the MCL staff began to identify the main topics and guiding questions for this program evaluation. The group identified the following categories of curriculum, learning environment, resources, assessments, program outcomes, and communication. So let's take a look at the major findings around these main topics. The majority of students with 63.4% of high school and 71% of middle school students were satisfied with the MCL curriculum. Another important piece of information we wanted to know was about course offerings. 62.2% of middle school and 70% of high school students felt that Parkway should offer additional languages. According to the comments, the most mentioned language was Mandarin Chinese. When is the ideal age to begin language study? According to those who responded to the surveys, between kindergarten and second grade. MCL staff wanted to know how students felt about the rigor of MCL classes. 76.1% of middle school students and 75.5% of high school students respond that their MCL teacher expects top-quality work. The four skill areas are key to learning languages. Listening and speaking are the two skill areas that are most challenging to replicate in a classroom environment. And the responses show a lower percentage of satisfaction than the skills of reading and writing, which are easier to perform in a classroom setting. 54.5% of high school and 46.8% of middle school students say that using technology is very beneficial to language learning, with 25.5% of middle school and 35.1% of high school students report using technology often. Teachers report a higher usage of technology in their classes. MCL teachers overwhelmingly feel that assessments are aligned with the curriculum. 73.5% of middle school and 64.5% of high school students feel that MCL assessments allow them to demonstrate what they know. 66.4% of graduates rate the program as adequate to excellent. Among the other respondents, over 90% rate the program as adequate to excellent. The outcomes of reflection may include a new way of doing something, the clarification of an issue, the development of a skill, or the resolution of a problem. A new cognitive map may emerge, or a new set of ideas may be identified. The changes may be quite small, or they may be large. The purpose of a program evaluation is to look critically at the successes and the challenges of our programs in Parkway. Upon reflection of the survey data, the current trends, and best practice in MCL, the recommendations are as follows. Begin to offer less commonly taught languages, specifically Mandarin Chinese and American Sign Language. Offer advanced placement course as the Capstone Language Offering. Explore and design in-class learning experiences that provide students the opportunity to connect with native speakers of the target language, especially native speakers their own age. I left that off. Research and develop instructional methods that continue to integrate technology into language instruction. Explore the feasibility of offering language study at earlier grades in Parkway. Continue to increase the enrollment of students of color in MCL classes, especially in advanced courses. Improve communication with stakeholders about the MCL curriculum and experiential learning via travel opportunities. I'd like to conclude with the following examples of many of the comments that we received as part of our program evaluation. A middle school student says, "What pleases me most is that it allows me to experience other cultures besides mine, which I find very interesting. Also, it'll help me later in life and open up to other places. It also helps me meet new people that are from different lifestyles, cultures, et cetera." A high school student says, "What pleases me most? I am interested in learning about another culture and language. Although I may not use the language very highly in the future, I am still intrigued and believe that we should at least learn another language for the purpose of thinking differently and understanding our own language as well." And yet another high school student says, "The way it is taught through different teaching styles, learning the language through vocabulary, listening to other people speak it as their native language, doing lots of group work, and learning the culture of Spanish-speaking countries." And from our graduates, "Learning Spanish in high school inspired me to relearn Hebrew, my native language, in college. And this year, I decided to pick up another language and chose Arabic. Through middle and high school Spanish, I discovered something I was passionate about. I almost quit my freshman year in high school in favor of other classes, but my teacher convinced me to stay. Now, four years later, I am eternally grateful for that. I am now a Spanish major and have found that Spanish is a passion and something I love, all thanks to Parkway South's Spanish Department." These comments provide a brief glimpse into how the five Cs are evident as students and graduates reflect on their journey in Parkway's MCL program. Questions?
Personal anecdote. My youngest son, who just turned 24, went on that German trip with Frau, and he is still in touch with his German host family, mainly through Facebook, but I see the messages and it's so sweet. I just love it.
Nancy, why don't we integrate technology into this? Because it seems like with our smart boards and that we have a wonderful way to either plug into things that are on the internet or actual live examples of natives, native people that, for that language.
Right. That is what was great with the student panel that we had at Project Parkway. The students talked about being able to access German newspapers, you know, German news online, you know, things that are really authentic, watching a German soap opera, you know, so like an ongoing story. A really great use of technology is happening at West High with a Spanish teacher there. She's connected with a Spanish class in Monterrey, Mexico. And this has been going on, I think the exchange has been going on for about three, four years. And, and they actually, she and the teacher in Mexico designed lessons together. His students are studying English. And they set it up so that the students get to know each other even before they Skype and they have an assignment and they exchange information. And they host each other, they stay in each other's homes. And it is, it has been probably, in my opinion, the highest level of using technology to help language learning.
That's what they're talking about. For, if you can't travel to the country, if you're FaceTiming with somebody that you can actually carry on a conversation with.
Yeah, yeah. So we're, making those connections is the challenge, but when it happens and it's the right match, it's amazing. It is.
Can you go back to that slide where you showed the numbers of students that are enrolled in the different languages?
Sure. And there's a much more detailed breakdown in the document. I summarized it, but-
We like the summaries.
Am I going the right way? Yeah. Yeah, okay. It was near the beginning.
That one?
That one.
Okay, so it looks like, my question has to do with, when do we, when do we find that our students are no longer interested in pursuing a particular language? And how do we bring in Mandarin Chinese, American Sign Language, whatever it is, that they are interested in studying?
So your first question about when do students lose an interest?
What do we do? I mean, so we do have Japanese-
At South High.
At South High, for 47 students.
Yes.
That teacher is part-time, I take it?
The teacher right now is full-time. Next year, there won't be enough, he's doing some other duties. Next year, there won't be enough students for him to be full-time.
So when, when is the day when we say our Parkway students aren't really interested in Japanese anymore?
Right. We have a course proposal process, and a part of that process is also to delete courses. And then those are conversations that happen around that table with principals. And we also have, you know, and sort of we have ongoing discussions too about, about exactly that. Unfortunately, it happens for a variety of reasons. For example, Japanese, there's no middle school program feeding it. And so now we have a new staff member, he's very, very interested in building the program, is talking about connecting with the middle schools. So we do try to think of other avenues as well, you know, really get to the why and address that.
I just wonder, you know, that seems to me to be adult-driven. You know, how do we look at, look at these numbers? Because, you know, how do we look at it in approach it's student-driven? What do students want to study? What will be most beneficial to students in later life?
And the other side of the coin is, we could have students in the other three high schools that don't have the opportunity to study it right now. Because there's only a teacher at South High. So we've, for years, wondered why we can't use technology to connect those students to that teacher rather than have them physically there.
And that is all part of this program evaluation process. And those are some discussions that I'll be having with MCL staff and with principals about how we can sustain and offer, have course offerings among the different high school buildings. Because we also talk about having a culture of student choice. And for our, you know, for those 47 students in Japanese language, that's their passion. You know, they really enjoy it. So we want to make sure that we're giving our students the, you know, their, what's following their passion as well.
So I have a friend whose daughter is a student at Truman. She's a language student, and she is studying Arabic. They don't have an Arabic teacher at Truman. She's connected with kids all over the country to a teacher somewhere in California who teaches these kids, and she gets credit for it.
Yes, there are some programs like that, and I have been exploring and will continue there to see how that might work for Parkway. There are some options like that. There are some options like that out there. Middlebury has a good one.
It's great to be able to plug into something like that if somebody wants to learn. You got ten students that want to learn Hebrew regardless of where they are, or Russian, or...
Right.
Lots of those languages out there that some students would have an interest in, but you couldn't put a whole class together.
Could be like an independent study.
Yeah, or then the virtual learning.
There is, that is definitely something that we're going to be exploring. How would we offer that in Parkway? How would we monitor it? You know, first of all, and is it a good program? You know, is it going to provide the student with the experience that they would have with a teacher, you know, and those opportunities to speak the language?
The other, the newer languages we offer, these numbers will go down too, I imagine.
That's part of it.
I'm sure Nancy, there's a lot of schools of thought out there. One that I heard is that we're pretty heavily driven by European languages here. That we ought, that a really diverse program would have Pacific Rim and European, and Latin may be important for, you know, certain careers. So I mean, that's kind of a school of thought out there too. It's not just student-driven, it's about also the ability to make sure we're representative of a real world.
Right, yes. And finding quality instruction is very important as well.
So, and I have a question. Something that you brought up earlier was that there was, you're starting to see this preference for like pre-K, getting younger and younger. I've got a friend whose wife is Vietnamese, and all three of his kids speak Vietnamese too. And we're just talking about the brain wiring and how language skills develop so early. That's kind of a tricky thing. I mean, you know, how do you, how do you reach down to that level? You know, I mean, we're trying to figure out, we're trying to like parse out what we can do at the high school level, the middle school level, you know?
We have a new director of early learning, and it's kind of...
Yes, yes.
The language is going to take care of that for us.
I mean, with parental involvement, that's, you know, that always helps, but I mean...
It's definitely, there are places that offer. It's, it would have to be very well thought out. There's a lot of dominos, and that's why one of the recommendations is explore the feasibility. Now, what would that look like? Which language would it be? How would it be taught? Well, how much fluency would we expect our students? Would it be a dual language? So there's lots, you know, what happens to those students when they get to middle school? What happens to students who weren't in the program and they get to middle school? So a lot, you know, there's a lot to think through, but that definitely, at that age, is a great age to start learning a language. Actually, the latest research that's just coming out also talks about around that age ten, eleven, twelve, because students understand enough about their first language that they can hook on the new learning. We now know more that they can connect the new learning to their first language. So it is a good time to learn a second language. It takes time to learn another language. Takes time.
That would really be helping me when I get my pedicure.
That too.
And my friend never knows what his wife is saying to their kids about him, so...
That's great. What a gift. What a wonderful gift. What a wonderful gift for his children.
Growing option too, isn't it?
Yes, and actually, we are, we, it's in the course guide for next year, American Sign Language at West Middle. We have, I believe there's about twenty-three students signed up in seventh grade, twenty-eight students signed up in Level One at the high school. We are interviewing candidates once again. It's very important. That's another, that is another facet in offering a new language, is that that person is very, very important, because you could potentially ruin a program before it even starts. So it's very, very important to make a well-thought-out hire when it comes to that as well. So it's exciting.
There's no mention in the recommendations about exploring elementary foreign languages. I know there's a lot of challenges with it as well, but there are also a lot of great programs around. So is there any intent to at least begin to think about it for the future and how that might work?
And one of the recommendations is to explore the feasibility, and so what I, yeah, I mean, that definitely is part of the whole thought process, and it would be to kind of get a ballpark figure too. I mean, it would require a lot of funding, time in the elementary day. I mean, there's a lot of dominos that would need to be...
But there are a lot of advantages too, as we all know.
It's wonderful. It's wonderful.
There's still after-school language books, like there used to be in Parkway, in elementary school? Because that's, my kids did that.
Right, yes.
They're great. I mean...
Right, there was...
An hour after school, a couple times a week.
Through community ed. I'm not sure if it's offered for this coming year. It has been offered on and on.
That would be a great way to expose a lot of kids to it without bringing it into the school day.
Right. And there is sometimes at summer school in the elementary, teachers have offered an introductory.
But they need it consistently. They need it consistently. They don't need it just in the summer.
Right.
Even something simple like with Spanish, because our demographics are changing so much, that would be something kids, there's kids all around them in their neighborhoods now that speak Spanish.
Simple, easy for you to say.
Because my children both took Spanish through the community ed programs. It was at Claymont, and they did offer it before school through an outside company that came in, and so they were offering that at that time. But I was surprised not to see foreign language being offered in summer school for elementary students, and wondering if that would be something to be considered for the future as a way to help introduce that to those students at that. I realize it's only a three-week period of time, but it still is a nice introduction to that. My other question though comes around, I realize that foreign language is not offered in eighth grade.
Yes.
And is that...
It is offered in eighth grade.
No? Well, okay, it's offered, but you can't take it for the first time.
Right, it's the second semester.
You have had to have taken it in the past.
Right.
But yet you can start it in ninth grade.
Yes.
Having had no foreign language before, courses before.
Yes.
So I'm wondering if that's going to be part of your, the evaluation to reconsider that, or what would be the reasoning behind not allowing a first-time taker of foreign language in eighth grade? To help get them into perhaps considering that in their high school years.
The way the courses are set up is seventh grade is first semester of Level One at the high school, and eighth grade is second semester of Level One at the high school.
Okay, okay.
So they can't just jump in in eighth grade because they've missed a whole semester of learning. So they, so if a student decided they're in eighth grade, they, oh, you know, maybe I should have started last year. It, you know, it really, it's too bad that that doesn't happen. I really believe that most of our students and our counselors understand the way the program works, that, I really haven't heard from parents or, you know, from the community that that's been a big, that's held back a lot of students from learning a language.
In a particular year, if a student decided, I want to start Spanish or whatever's taught in middle school, I could start. I might be in eighth grade, or I might be a seventh grader, a sixth would have probably already. But if I'm a sixth grader, I wait till I'm an eighth grader to decide. It seems kind of sad that they are denied that opportunity.
They're denied it in eighth grade, but they can start in ninth grade.
Right, they can start in ninth grade. Yeah, yeah.
You know, there's a lot of options out there. I'm aware that, you know, some school districts of our size would think about maybe having satellite programs. I'll just say Claymont, to be sincere. Claymont might become, in a certain area, might be the school that's going to offer a Spanish program, or, and then we'd have some choice of parents, you know, it's almost like a special assignment process. Some schools will immerse a language teacher in a school, because the idea of an early language is developing. It doesn't matter if it's Spanish, German, it's actually developing, learning that first language or different language in English. So I mean, there's all kinds of models out there, really. It's not about having to do it all in one spot. I mean, there's options. There's also options, Desi and I were just talking recently about, I mean, we may, our day is so crowded now, so we might actually have parents make choices, you know, maybe, you know, it's strings or world language if we're students at a certain level. I'm just throwing ideas out. So I mean, as we explore this, we might have to for cost and for choice.
No way.
Well, I know, but I mean, if we, we also have a very structured day. And then finally, I'd just like to remind, we talk about this as if, as if things are kind of broken. Nancy had a statistic up there that we should be very proud of. Eighty-eight percent of our graduating seniors have had world language. They didn't start in elementary, and they're doing all right. So I think we ought not be too critical of ourselves. It would be nice to start earlier. It would probably be a benefit to our students if we're really getting ready, and for some of them, they could do multiple languages. But eighty-eight percent of our seniors, graduating seniors, have done world language. Yeah, that's pretty awesome. I don't know how many school districts could claim that.
Colleges require two years of the language.
Two years for...
That's probably why most of our high school students are taking it, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Do we require two years?
Well, mainly because colleges are requiring.
The way to go is to make it a French immersion school.
You might be teaching it.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Well, if we look at our mission statement, and I know he's still in the room, I believe, Michael presented some challenges recently, you know, you can't not look at our mission statement and talk about, you know, the future and not have this discussion, because we really do need to think about preparing our children and obviously languages and what's really out there. Now, Michael had those, they still have that, by the way, those big, you know, what's the dominant, unfortunately, it's not French, but it is...
That's okay. I'm not the first person to admit that.
It's Mandarin, you know, it is Chinese.
Absolutely. I mean, if I had to pick today, I would not have picked French.
Right. You know, and that's, that's part of the ongoing challenge, is that based on your experience, which language is the most important sort of depends, you know? A lot of people do business with Brazil, so Portuguese. You know, so it really, one thing we do know is that if you learn one language well, a second language well, that learning that third language, you've got something to hang on to. It comes faster. You understand culture. You understand that maybe if I hold my fork this way, I might be, you know, you know, I might get in trouble for that, or, you know, just, but you're, there's an awareness. And I thought that our student, the student comments really got to that. They get that, you know, that it's like, I understand that people think differently than I do, so...
The company I work for is global, and if you speak another language, it is a plus, and you move around in that company fast. So that's just how most companies are nowadays.
It is valued, so...
Nancy, thank you so much.
All right.
Please don't take this as criticism. We're just interested in trying to find out more and...
Yeah, I appreciate the feedback, and I, the teachers and I, we watch, we'll watch this, and we will, and then we will do what we need to do.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks.
Sixteen point oh, call for a special meeting. There is none. Seventeen point oh, next scheduled closed session. The next anticipated closed session will be held on May sixth, two thousand and fifteen at six P.M. here at Central Middle School. Details of the closed session will be posted twenty-four hours in advance of that meeting. Eighteen point oh recess, there is none. Before I call for the end of this meeting, there is one person that we all know, and when I mention that person's name, you'll know why we love her so much and respect her, and as a board, how integral she is to us being successful. It was Administrative Assistance Day last week.
Today.
No, I'm sorry, today, this week. And we just want Nikki to know how much we love and appreciate her, and that we wouldn't be the same board without her. She's the glue that makes it work, so...
And half of us probably wouldn't have shown up tonight.
You can't imagine.
I'm not saying which half.
We have something...
She keeps us on track.
We have something here for you that we'd like you to have, and just know that we really appreciate you, and we can't do this job.
Thank you. Thank you guys.
And if there's any interest at all, the Cardinals won seven to five. And the Blues after one period are ahead three to nothing. And the Brewers, no. Nineteen point oh, closed session, there is none. Twenty point oh, may I have a motion and a second to adjourn the regular meeting? Motion carries seven zero at this... Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor? Beth wants to stay.
No, it just takes a while.
It does. You'll be correcting me for months. Motion carries seven zero. At this time, we will adjourn. There is no closed session, but we thank you for your help and participation and attendance tonight. Thank you again.